I'd like to call to order the July 10, 2023 organizational business meeting of the Board of Education. For the safety of all those in attendance, display of signs or banners will not be permitted. If you have a sign or banner, you will be asked to leave it outside the boardroom for the duration of the meeting. Tonight's meeting is a meeting of the Board held in public, not a public hearing or discussion with the Board. Please be respectful of the presenters, the Board, and your fellow audience members as we discuss and deliberate the items on tonight's agenda. Comments or actions that are threatening to or disrespectful of presenters, the Board, or others in attendance, and including use of foul language or any other behavior that is disruptive of the Board meeting will result in immediate removal from the meeting. Patrons will be invited to share comments as part of the public comment portion of the meeting as outlined in Board Policy BCBI. That time is set aside on the Board's agenda for members of the public to share their thoughts. It is not a time for dialogue with or a question-and-answer session with the Board. Patrons who wish to participate in public comment must fill out the public comment form so that the Board or staff can follow up with you regarding your public comment as needed. If your comments require follow-up from the Board or staff, that will occur after tonight's meeting. The District assumes no responsibility or liability for the information shared during public comment. The views expressed are solely those of the speakers and do not necessarily reflect the views of the Lawrence Public Schools. In addition, USD 497 provides access to our Board meetings through live streaming. The platform used for this live streaming has acceptable use rules for content on its site. USD 497 does not delete or hide Board meeting videos. However, the streaming platform may elect to do so if the content of public comment or any other portion of the meeting is found to violate the platform's acceptable use rules. Thank you for your cooperation in these areas. At this time, our first item this evening is Board member initiation. I would invite our county clerk, Jamie Shu, to the podium. Thank you. Thank you for being here, Mr. Shu.
Stand up. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Robert Byers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of USD 497 school board member, so help me God.
Okay, repeat that.
The duties of USD 497 school board member.
The duties of USD 497 school board member.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Bob, and welcome back. We are so pleased to have you with us this evening. Okay, at this time, we will move on to approval of the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda for the July 10, 2023 Board meeting.
Second. Kimball?
Yes.
Van? Cadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Our next items are organizational items for the new Board Business Year. As a reminder, for our patrons, several years ago, the Board adopted an organization and operational manual that set out procedures for the Board to use to elect officers. Those procedures went into place partially starting last year with election of the position of Vice President for the Board, and this will be the first year that the Board is following the entire set of procedures for election of our officers. So at this time, the next item on the agenda is election of the President of the Board. At Board members' places, there are two ballots with the names of the Board members who have been... Oh, not yet, okay. Elise is going to pass out the ballot. Sorry, they were sitting at my spot. For election of Board President. Our procedure is that Board members could nominate a Board member or themselves in advance for the positions to be elected this evening. If there was a nomination received for that person, it appears on the paper ballot. This evening, we have one nomination that was received in advance for Board President, and that was for Kelly Jones. So this is how we will proceed. Once the ballots are completed to be passed out, I will open the floor for any nominations from the floor. If there are any nominations, I would ask Board members to write in the name of the candidates that are nominated from the floor. Also, I will confirm with each candidate that has been nominated that they wish to be considered for that position. Once we have completed that process, I will then, depending on if there's only one candidate on the ballot, as we have here, if there are no other nominations, we will proceed directly to a motion and a vote. If there are multiple candidates on the ballot, then Board members will be asked to complete the ballot and return it to the Board Clerk, and she will tally the votes and announce the result. And then we would have a motion in a second to approve the election of the person for the officer position. All right. So at this time, are there any additional nominations for Board President? Seeing no additional nominations, I will move that the Board of Education elect Kelly Jones as our new President of the Board.
Second.
Van?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Cadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
And I believe at this time, I'm supposed to pass this process over to you, so are you ready? After we have completed election of the officers, we will actually take a five-minute recess to reset the whole Board table. Do you want to... Okay, but you actually need the paper ballot.
Okay, so we'll move on to the election of the Vice President. We have two candidates, and I'll take a moment to ask if both of them accept their nominations. Paula?
Yes.
Okay. And Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Because we have two candidates, are there comments either from the candidates or discussion? Do you have anything you want to say? Okay. Anything?
No.
All right. Then.
Discussion.
Yep, go ahead, Paula.
Oh, sure, sure. Do you have any...
Oh, no.
This is Carol. I would just ask that the Board support Bob Byers for Vice Presidency as he is the only one that will be guaranteed to be here in January because we are facing an election. So in January, the only candidates, the Board members that may still be sitting here are Kelly Jones and Bob Byers. And I do believe we painted ourselves in a corner with this system, so I ask that you support Bob Byers.
I'll add to that just to context around Bob's service. And I'll note that he has five years of service on the Board. He served on the Future Planning Committee, so he's up to date on our last year of service. I've served with him on the District Site Council for several years. He's continually been a part of this district and volunteered his time for the last 20 years. He has the support from our community, which we saw from the comments and social media after he was appointed to the Board from our colleagues here. He has a long career working with children, almost 40 years working with individuals who really had high needs. The Board has a history of appointing people to the Board. In this particular circumstance, Marcel Harmon also served and stepped up when we had someone in Board leadership, when we had somebody step down in a similar circumstance. So I'll just add that as context and thank both Paula and Bob for their willingness to run.
I'll also add that I think Bob and Paula will be great candidates. And Paula has a great job in her role as Vice President. And I do think it's reasonable for the Board to take into consideration the unique situation that we are in. And I do think having that continuity is good, even though if it's only throughout the year, through the end of the year. Both are great candidates, so I think however the Board decides to vote, it's perfectly fine. I wanted to acknowledge Paula's leadership and how she really helped lead and get us through this as well. So both are great candidates.
Agreed. Anyone else?
So I want to comment on a couple of the same things that have been mentioned. First, to thank Paula for her leadership as Vice President this past year. It's been a pleasure to serve with her and also with Erica as our past president. I do think that one of the benefits of our process as we have adopted it as a Board is that it does allow us the flexibility to consider unusual circumstances and a number of factors when we are making decisions about who is capable of taking on the extra responsibility and hours of service that it requires to be a Board Officer. And so anyone who steps up and says that they're ready to take on that role, I'm very appreciative of that. And it is a very weighty decision to think about weighing what are the factors that we need to consider. I too, I guess I am the only Board member that previously served with Bob on the Board, and he has always been an exemplary Board member, someone who is committed to service and leadership. And so I appreciate your willingness to be considered for this position, so thank you.
The only thing I would add is in relation to the fact that I don't necessarily agree that it's the system that's necessarily painted us in this corner, as it is early Board member registration that's painted us in this corner.
With no additional comments, if you could fill out your ballots, and then Elise will pick them up.
You need to pass out the... Oh, you passed them already? I gave mine to Kelly, I think. So who has the extra one? I need it back. Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
All right. The votes are as follows. Shannon Kimball has voted for Bob Byers. Erica Hill has voted for Paula Van. Paula Van has voted for Paula Van. Carol Cadu Blackwood has voted for Bob Byers. G.R. Gordon Ross has voted for Bob Byers. Kelly Jones has voted for Bob Byers. And Bob Byers has voted for Bob Byers. Our new Vice President is Bob Byers. Shannon, I need a little bit of help. There is a motion still on the table. Do we need to, after the vote?
We need to go ahead and do the motion and the vote.
Okay.
Yes.
Can I have a motion to approve the vote?
I move that the Board of Education elects Bob Byers as our new Vice President of the Board of Education.
I second.
Hill?
Yes.
Cadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Van?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
We're going to take a five-minute recess to reorganize the table.
Madam President, before we do that, may I have a moment of personal privilege?
Yes.
Thank you. I just want to thank my Board colleagues for the opportunity to serve as President this past year. It's been... It's been a wonderful experience to work with the Board in this role in spite of all of the difficult circumstances that we have been through as a district this last year. I appreciate all the support that you have given to me as we have navigated this work together. And I want to congratulate you, Kelly, on becoming Board President again. I know that you will continue leading this Board with integrity and grace. And you always do such a good job of thinking through issues, and I appreciate that very much about you. And I am looking forward to working with you as past president, as part of Board leadership. And Bob, I look forward to working with you in my role as past president as well in this upcoming year. So thank you, I appreciate that.
Appreciate that. Okay, so we're going to take a moment. We'll reconvene at 6:22. To special recognition, and we have with us Dr. Lewis, who's going to start leading.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Board President Jones. First time seeing that. Board members and members of the public. Not yet, sir.[943.34][943.34](Laughter). I'm at the podium with the mic right now, okay? It is my honor, my pleasure, to present this year's Lawrence Public Schools Outstanding Citizen Award to the entire staff of the Leeds Center of Kansas. And so I would like, yes.[961.12][961.12](Applause). You ready, Derek?
No.[969.31][969.31](Laughter).
At this time, I would like to invite Executive Director Derek Korn and his team to come up and join me. You can stand right up here.[978.01][978.01](Applause). At times, you may have had people to talk about you behind your back. Well, I'm going to talk about you right in front of your face, so how about that? So we are certainly truly fortunate to benefit from strong relationships with many of our community partners. And as I've said before, our school simply cannot do this work alone. One of the most steadfast partners for nearly 30 years now has been the Leeds Center of Kansas. In August, the district will kick off its annual all-staff convocation at the Leeds Center. And I will tell you that this staff bends over backwards to accommodate us. This partnership enables all 1,600 of our Lawrence Public Schools staff to come together as one team in one location to hear a message and launch the new school year. You know, when COVID-19 happened, we didn't know how we could make this happen. And so our Leeds Center friends graciously worked with us to present a convocation program livestream so that all of our staff could watch it from their respective schools. You know, the pandemic caused the same conundrum for our annual One Dream Martin Luther King celebration, and so the Leeds Center, again, stepped up in a major way to support our One Dream Committee in livestreaming the entire event for the entire community. So working together this past January, the partnership raised the One Dream Celebration to a whole new level with the theme "Love Illuminates Life." The Leeds Center has graciously welcomed us for these and many other district special events, including College and Career Night, All-City Music Concerts, state music festivals, and I think even a high school prom at one time. And when our staff and students are on the stage in this world-class performing arts center with these professionals that are doing the lighting and the sound, and they have their little earpieces in, you have the stagehands and the audience, and sometimes the voice of God, event management, this team really makes us look like superstars and feel like superstars. And so beyond these events, our collaboration with Derek, who is the engagement... I'm sorry, with Derek Korn, also the Engagement and Education Director, Anthea Schufus, Senior Events and Audience Services Director, Kate Lorenz, Events and Operations Manager, Amber Nickel, and the entire Leeds Center staff, who you will meet in just a few minutes, has far-reaching effects throughout not only Lawrence Public Schools but throughout this entire community. I've also asked Dina Johnston to speak about the founding Lawrence Education Achievement Partner with the Lawrence Schools Foundation. Dina Johnston, also our Elementary Curriculum Director, will speak to the Leeds Center's support of our student learning and enriching our curriculum. We also have Lizette DeBoord, District Curriculum and Instructional Coach, and upon the board approval tonight, who will be one of our newest assistant principals. She will also speak to this team's support of our professional learning opportunities for our teaching staff as well as our scholars. Dina?
Thank you, Dr. Lewis, and thank you, Board, for allowing us to be here and to present and speak on behalf of, for the Leeds Center. A strong educational system is the foundation of a prosperous community. Recognizing this, the Lawrence Public Schools and the Lawrence Chamber of Commerce collaborated from the Lawrence Business Education Program, which is now known as the Lawrence Education Achievement Partners. In order to recognize the wide range of organizations involved in the foundation, shared commitment to supporting student achievement. Moreover, one founding organization that has been super important but impactful to the growth and expansion of our program has been our lead partners with the Leeds Center of Kansas. The Leeds Center, as Dr. Lewis mentioned, has been a partnership with us for nearly 30 years. Their contribution and impact can be measured or determined in many different ways, such as community leadership, community organization involvement, humanitarian efforts, service, volunteerism, overall support of the Lawrence Public Schools educators, our students, and our programs within the arts. In addition, in 2016, the Lawrence Schools Foundation and the Leeds Center were proud to partner and introduce Ovation, which was the very first district-wide talent show and fundraiser that showcased the amazing talents of our USD 497 students, held on the main stage at the Leeds Center with full production. That has become now an annual event that allows the community to come together to celebrate all of the immense talent among Lawrence youth, and we're going into our eighth year. So we're super excited about that. But we are honored on behalf of the Lawrence Schools Foundation, and we've got some of our board members and our staff here as well. We're honored to collaborate with you throughout the years, and thank you for your service, your dedication, and your support, and above all, your advocacy for our youth. So, thank you.
Thank you.[1277.51][1277.51](Applause).
I have the honor to talk about how you support curriculum and students. And the Leeds Center has supported the Lawrence Public Schools educators and families in so many different ways. For nearly 25 years, the Leeds Center has invited our preschoolers through high school students to participate in performing arts experiences and world-class artists. I'm going to talk as an educator and bringing my first and second graders to your performances. There's nothing like watching the excitement of a kindergartner or a first grader getting off the bus, walking into the Leeds Center, seeing, being a part of that enormous auditorium, their wide eyes and their giggles because they've never sat in a seat like that before or been a part of an experience, and you have provided that for our students in Lawrence, which is very unique. Over the... There will be several performances. We've already been working on what those performances will be for our K-2 and 3-5 and middle schoolers and high schoolers for next school year. Then for the past 10 years, all third graders, and this is so very unique to the city, all third graders get this extra opportunity to engage in authentic theatrical activities. Lawrence Theater Arts Day gives every third grader in our district a chance to spend an entire day learning about drama, dance and movement, sometimes magic, sometimes juggling, makeup, puppetry, and all in a setting where it is in a rotation, so kids all get that experience. It's just a very fun way for all of our students to engage in the arts. Thank you very much.[1396.01][1396.01](Applause).
So in addition to all of that amazing stuff, I was asked to talk about all of the numerous things that you've done with and for our teachers over the year. So retired music teacher Sarah Bonner recalls attending several workshops in the early 2000s. Sarah says, "I loved the many Kennedy Center teaching artists, especially Marcia Daft. She wove math standards and storytelling into music and movement. It was very powerful, and I still use her music cards in my teaching today." In 2019, the Leeds Center brought in Carol Brad... Sorry, Brattery, from Blue Ring Studios to work with the art teachers on creating collaborative art silks with their students. And then you displayed all of those beautiful pieces of work in the lobby. Most recently, the Leeds Center has offered various music, elementary music teachers the opportunity to work with both Ashley St. Armont in 2020 and Jake Shimabukuro in 2022 on both songwriting in the classroom and playing ukulele with their students. Emily Bodicker, elementary music teacher at both Woodlawn and New York, says, "I'm thankful for the Leeds Center's leadership and partnership with our schools. Participating in the professional development of Jake was an amazing opportunity to learn and to perform with a ukulele virtuoso. The Leeds Center's willingness to not only support our teachers but to go the extra mile is awesome." Thank you to everyone at the Leeds Center, both past and present, for all you have done with and for our students, our staff, and our families in Lawrence Public Schools. Your partnership, leadership, has truly touched every aspect of Lawrence Public Schools. Thank you for all that you have done and will continue to do in the future.[1510.47][1510.47](Applause).
See, this partnership is certainly unique and definitely one of a kind. And so at this time, I know you all are used to directing people to go onstage, but how does it feel now to have people direct you? So at this time, I would like Derek Korn to come and introduce his staff and say a few words.
Thank you so much, Dr. Lewis. Thank you, Dina, Denise, Lizette, and the entire school board, to the School's Foundation team, Michelle, Jamie, Jennifer Berquist, and it is truly an honor to be honored in the same year as the one and only Sandra Gott. I'd like to introduce first our incredible Engagement and Education Director, Anthea Schufus.[1560.74][1560.74](Applause). And Anthea curates all of the school's performances that every single one of our students in the district see on an annual basis, in addition to many other things. Next, we have Shala Stevenson, who is our Creative Director. And Shala makes everything that we do look good to the public, from printed materials to website to videos. I mean, she's involved from soup to nuts. Next, we have our Events and Operations Manager, Amber Nickel. And Amber is, in particular, very involved with the college nights in terms of coordinating... I don't know. How many PK, how many colleges?
A lot.
A lot, okay. A lot of colleges. And next, we have Senior Director of Events and Audience Services, Kate Lorenz. And Kate oversees all events and audience services in box office as well. And so every one of our staff members is truly involved with everything that goes on at the Leeds Center. Next, we have our Marketing and Communications Coordinator, Betsy Ostrander. And Betsy is the wonderful, wonderful genius that puts out all of the Ovation social media posts just before, you know, the two weeks leading up to Ovation. And those are honestly the most engaging posts that we put out, like, I think, the whole year. So it's a wonderful partnership. Next, we have our Box Office and Events Manager, Kim Spencer. And Kim's team is responsible for selling all those tickets to Ovation so that we can donate a lot of funds to the Lawrence Schools Foundation, amongst many other things. And last but certainly not least here tonight, is our custodial supervisor, Mr. Danny Bowman. And Danny and his team make sure that the Leeds Center is sparkling and clean for every single event that happens at the Leeds Center, regardless of whether it's for Lawrence Public Schools or the entire general public. So it's an incredible job that he and his team do. You know, on behalf of the Leeds Center, just want to, once again, thank you all for this recognition. A couple of current staff members of USD 497 have served as Friends of the Lead Board members, and those include Julie Boyle, Kevin Harrell, and Patrick Kelly. So thank you for your service to the Leeds Center. And I also want to really, really thank the elected officials that are here today. You know, I certainly realize as a parent of students in the school district that this past year especially has not been a walk in the park. And I want to really thank you for your dedication, your leadership, and commitment to really trying to make this district the best it can be. Thank you for your commitment and efforts, and leadership is difficult. I understand that, so thank you so much. I'd also like to thank Dr. Lewis and also all the entire staff, the teachers, and the... all the staff for their service, and I know tonight's an important night on many fronts for that. Finally, I just want to acknowledge the team here in the sense that, you know, I believe in the concept of continuous improvement in evolving and not being complacent ever with where you are. And, you know, as the great Kansan Ted Lasso says, "Taking on a challenge is a lot like riding a horse, isn't it? If you're comfortable while you're doing it, you're probably doing it wrong."[1788.47][1788.47](Laughter). So thank you to the team for your incredible commitment to this, and once again, thank you to the district. And Dr. Lewis, I've said this to you probably on a number of occasions... And, Dr. Lewis, I've said this to you probably on a number of occasions, the Lead Center is here to help. We believe that being a true community partner means that you are doing things that are not just for your personal benefit, you're doing things for others' benefit. And so, I want to reiterate that to you. We're here to help. So, thank you.
[applause]
At the Lead Center, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for everything you do.
Thanks really, truly. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
How are you? Congratulations. Hi. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Good to see you, Derek. Congratulations.
You too.
Okay, we'll move on to the report of the Superintendent of the Schools.
Thank you. Good evening, once again. First of all, I want to acknowledge and welcome back Dr. Cynthia Johnson, who's been away for a while, but she's back now in full health. I know you've seen her on the screen doing reports, but she's back live and in person, so good to have you back, Dr. Johnson. As I mentioned during our recognition, we are excited to have, yep, she's still back there, Lizette DeBoort, taking on the Interim Assistant Principal and Athletic Director role at West Middle School. Lizette is a district curriculum and instructional coach, and has worked, most recently, with Woodlawn, as well as elementary art, music, and PE teachers, and library and media specialists. She has demonstrated outstanding leadership throughout her 17 years here in the district, including her service as a music teacher in many of our elementary schools. So, again, as I mentioned, this will be on the personnel report for the board to hopefully approve tonight. I was also sorry to receive the resignation of Lawrence Virtual School Principal Susan Cooper. She is returning to Topeka 501, where she began her teaching career. We certainly appreciate her service to our district as a middle school learning coach, assistant principal, and athletic director for the last two years, as well as principal of LVS. I want to publicly share my sympathies to the Booth family upon Hank's death this past weekend. I am not aware of a greater champion of public education, a greater champion of Lawrence Public Schools, and certainly a greater champion of Lawrence High School as a chesty lion than Hank Booth. He graduated from Lawrence High, a proud chesty lion, class of 1964. He was the voice of Lawrence High School football for about 50 years. He's helped start the seventh grade football program. He was part of the inclusive Ryan Gray Playground for All Children that was constructed, or that is constructed at Hillcrest, and served on the Junior Achievement Board of Directors, among numerous other commitments to our schools. Hank was a founding member of the Lawrence Schools Foundation Board of Trustees. He emceed the Foundation Follies for 25 years. I recall Hank telling a story when he was asked to first serve on the original Lawrence Business Education Partnership Board, which is now called LEAP, or Lawrence Educational Achievement Partners. Hank said at the time, "Yes, I'll do it as long as I don't have to raise money." And so, it wasn't very long before Hank was a part of a small group of foundation, chamber, and school leaders, passionate about kindergarten readiness. They were raising funds for the first early childhood educational readiness classroom. And then, one by one, as funds were raised, other classrooms were added over the years. And they have come together to anchor what is now Kennedy Early Childhood Community Center. And earlier this evening, just a moment ago, we presented our Outstanding Citizen Award to the Lead Center staff. Well, Hank Booth was the first to receive this honor back in 1988. Then, a decade later, he was inducted into the Lawrence Lions Alumni Association Hall of Fame. I certainly cannot recount all of the ways that Hank has contributed to the strength and the success of our schools. There are just too many. And I'm sure many of you have stories and fond memories of Hank, in particular, how he has impacted your life and the lives of others, and certainly how he has impacted this community. Our Lawrence School families joins the Lawrence community in mourning the loss of this Lawrence giant. Rest in peace, Hank. Congratulations to the City of Lawrence, the Lawrence, Kansas Police Department, and Free State High School Resource Officer, Corporal Casey Wiltz. Corporal Wiltz was deservingly named the Kansas School Resource Officer of the Year this past weekend. And so, if anyone is counting, that's two Kansas SROs of the year right here at our Lawrence Police Department. Sergeant Shelby Brohard received the honor last year. More honors, upon the invitation of Kansas State Board of Education Member Ann Ma, Board President Kelly Jones, Dr. Bill Dewitt, who's with us today, will, and I, will attend the State Board's meeting tomorrow afternoon in Topeka. Dr. Dewitt will present information highlighting the innovative work of the Lawrence College and Career Academy and its National School Board Association Magna Grand Prize. Speaking of recognition, earlier today, the Lawrence Noon Rotary Club presented its Paul Harris 2023 Non-Rotarian of the Year Award to our very own past Board President, now Shannon Kimble. And as we know, Shannon is in her third term as president in her 12th year of service. She came to the Board as an active parent in her children's school. She has begun to make, take on roles in the district-wide committees. Shannon is also passionate about public education and has served at the state and national level, testifying and providing testimony to the Kansas Legislature. She also has advocated for public education as a role as President of Board of Directors of the Kansas Association of School Boards, and also as a committee member of the National School Board Association. The Rotary Club honored Shannon for modeling service above self in our community. And I can't think of a more worthy and deserving individual than our past Board President, Shannon Kimble. We will rightfully honor you at our next School Board meeting. Thank you. Our certified staff and the membership of PAL CWA, our representing classified staff, ratified their respective negotiated agreements. This evening, the Board will consider approving those. While we still have a lot of work to do to get all of our employees' salaries where we want them to be, this does not diminish the fact that those negotiated agreements and compensation packages represent significant progress on the Board's top financial goal, which is to provide competitive wages to recruit and retain high-quality staff to serve our scholars. And I want to publicly thank our Board members, our administrators, and staff members who served on negotiations teams, all of the members of our Futures Planning Committee, Boundary Committee, our consultants with RSPN Associates, and every student, every parent, every caregiver, employee, and every community member who took time to participate in the Futures Planning engagement process. There were many, a couple of public input sessions, a public survey, and so, we could not have gotten to this point without the work of everyone in this community. I recall upon my arrival back in 2018 during the Listening and Learning Tour, we went out and just asked three simple questions. And one of those questions were, given our financial struggles, what should be our top priorities going forward? And time and time again, we heard a consistent response, which was improved staff salaries. And that was five years ago. And here we are tonight, that I'm calling definitely a historic day for Lawrence Public Schools. Certainly appreciate the Board's commitment, determination, and perseverance in decision-making of those tough decisions, those emotional and painful discussions. No one in this organization wants to close a school or cut a staff member's position. This Board certainly made some difficult decisions to set this district up and set this district on a path to operate more efficiently and overall improve the financial health of this district, as well as the future of Lawrence Public Schools. I always say, setting this district up for students who are not even here on this earth yet. And so, this is the work that has been done over this past year. I will continue to acknowledge the losses that were felt by our community, and we also need to celebrate the progress with what I believe is an unprecedented raise for our teachers and our classified staff. Also want to add that until one has walked in one's shoes or worked in our roles or shouldered responsibilities, one cannot know the critical importance of effective leadership provided by our district administrators, provided by our school administrators, and these are our building principals and our building associate principals and assistant principals. These passionate and dedicated, innovative and hardworking individuals are phenomenal in terms of the work that they do. And I'm so proud of the work that they have done and the work that they continue to do, and understand that their value to our team and to the progress made on our strategic goals. And so, if anyone has questions about what our district or building administrators, our building principals do for our school system, please contact my office. I'll be happy to show you exactly what all of our administrators do and the many hours that they put in to support our teachers, support our staff, but most importantly, to support our scholars. And then, lastly, one last housekeeping note to share. The City of Lawrence will be shutting off water service at the ESC and surrounding neighborhoods tomorrow morning for an improvement project. And so, as a result, this building will not open tomorrow until 10:00 a.m. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. We'll move on to the report of the President of the Board of Education. So, I've held this office for about 30 minutes, and I want to just take a moment to thank Paul, Shannon, and Erica for their leadership in what was one of the most challenging years that I've served on the Board. You've set an example for how I want to be in this particular role, and I will be looking to you all for assistance as we move into the next year. I recognize that I was the last person standing and is why I am in this position. So, that does call upon some humility. So, I'll definitely be looking to you all for assistance, and I can't imagine three stronger, more prepared women to be able to do that with. So, I appreciate everything that you've done on the Board. Thank you. I also want to say to Bob, you stepped up when there was a person that had to step down and immediately stepped into a leadership role. That's a lot to take on, and I appreciate your willingness, and I'm committed to working with you and Dr. Lewis in a collaborative way. And I know that you're going to provide me lots of guidance along the way, so thank you. Over the weekend, I had the opportunity to attend forums. Candidates had their, our School Board candidates had their first opportunity to address the public, and I was excited to see the caliber of people that showed up. I know how hard it is to get up and have two minutes or a little bit more to be able to share your thoughts and feelings on really complicated and complex issues. So, I encourage the public that if you would like to know more about where candidates are at, I know they are all eager to be speaking with you, so they have availability, and please reach out to those that are as interested in leadership in our, in our district and seeing it do well as the candidates that I saw at the forums. I also want to acknowledge that running a campaign is not free. So, in addition to maybe hearing what their voices are and what they want to bring to the table, if you're so inspired by one of those candidates, you certainly might consider a small donation. To Dr. Lewis's words toward Hank Booth, I certainly couldn't say anything more, but I want to tell you how much I appreciate you being so thoughtful and bringing forward all of his great contributions. He was the kind of leader in our community who made sure that we elevated public education, it celebrated the work we did, and he asked us challenging questions, but I never felt like he was shaming me. And he engaged in this dialogue that made me really proud to be part of Lawrence and really proud to be part of this district. And he is the kind of voice that Lawrence really needs. So, I hope that as we move through the campaign, we think about the way that he celebrated Lawrence Public Schools, and we have conversations and dialogues that don't avoid critiques or don't avoid having difficult conversations, but also reserve the opportunity to say those things that are really great about our district, which is something that Hank modeled. So, with that, I will pass it on now to public comment. Does someone want to read the public commentary?
The USD 497 Board of Education welcomes public comments and thanks you for taking time to talk to us about our policies and procedures. We set aside this time during our regular meetings to hear from the public. Patrons who wish to participate in public comment must fill out the public comment form so that district staff or the Board can follow up with you regarding your public comment as necessary. This is your time to share your opinions. However, public comment is not the appropriate forum for making complaints about specific staff or students. If needed, the Board President or a providing officer of the meeting may direct that a patron's comments be heard by the Board in executive session in order to protect the privacy of the individuals to be discussed. Before participating in public comment to share a complaint, the Board requests that public commentators follow the complaint procedure set out in Board and District Policy as appropriate. If you need assistance in these processes, please let the Board clerk or other district staff know. The Board President will invite commenters to comment on topics not included on the agenda at the beginning of each meeting. Comments relating to agenda items are welcome after the Board has had an opportunity to discuss the topic. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The district assumes no responsibility and reliability for the information shared during public commentary. The views expressed are solely those of the speakers and do not necessarily reflect the views of the Lawrence Public Schools.
Okay, so I'm going to need technical assistance. So, I'm going to turn to Shannon for a moment. At some point, I won't, but right now, I do. Because we are, the public comment that we have listed is all about an item that's going to be polled, do they go now or does it wait?
We can clarify. So, she said she was going to have some general comment and then have specific comment on the poll item.
But if we're polling the item, do they need to wait till new business?
Well, it depends on if that's, if they are, if they are wanting to do general comment or if they're talking specifically about this item. So, maybe Sheila.
Okay. So, Sheila and Jennifer, this is a little unusual, but could you come to the Board? All right, Sheila, do you want to stay up?
Can I just start? Okay. I'm a former Lawrence Virtual School employee. As you consider and make decisions regarding the future of Lawrence Virtual School, I thought it would be prudent to share some of my experience. I was one of the first educators hired when USD 497 turned over the management of the high school to K-12 Corporation in 2010. I had the privilege of participating in the growth of LVS as it became a thriving community with a dedicated staff well-versed in what is required to create a student-centered online learning community, serving the needs of the wide variety of families that choose this option. The homeroom model that LVS adopted provided the structure to motivate engagement, to support student learning, student social and emotional well-being, to combat feelings of isolation, and to provide academic accountability. Each LVS student knew that we cared for them and that we understood the importance of community building in the online learning environment. Every staff member at LVS is invested in and committed to creating a whole high school experience for all students, no matter the obstacles. Over the years, we added clubs, activities, yearbook, prom, graduation, and always had regular check-ins with families. It takes specific skills to develop online learning community. We communicate with each other. It isn't just a matter of monitoring students as they progress through a course, canned curriculum for credit. Although this option is widely available, this is not LVS. Lawrence Virtual School teachers teach. LVS teachers are working under a different set of circumstances than brick-and-mortar classroom teachers, and so require a different set of solutions to meet student needs. Anyone proposing farming out LVS students to teach, teachers across the district, offering teachers to give up a plan to teach a class, does not understand the amount of work that online educators put into securing student-successful outcomes. The investment is in connecting with students and communication between all parties involved. How will teachers maintain community if they have less planned time for both brick-and-mortar and virtual?
thought it would be prudent to share some of my experience. I was one of the first educators hired when USD 497 turned over the management of the high school to K-12 Corporation in 2010. I had the privilege of participating in the growth of LVS as it became a thriving community with a dedicated staff well-versed in what is required to create a student-centered online learning community, serving the needs of the wide variety of families that choose this option. The homeroom model that LVS adopted provided the structure to motivate engagement, to support student learning, student social and emotional well-being, to combat feelings of isolation, and to provide academic accountability. Each LVS student knew that we cared for them and that we understood the importance of community building in the online learning environment. Every staff member at LVS is invested in and committed to creating a whole high school experience for all students, no matter the obstacles. Over the years, we added clubs, activities, yearbook, prom, graduation, and always had regular check-ins with families. It takes specific skills to develop online learning community. We communicate with each other. It isn't just a matter of monitoring students as they progress through a course, can curriculum for credit. Although this option is widely available, this is not LVS. Lawrence Virtual School teachers teach. LVS teachers are working under a different set of circumstances than brick and mortar classroom teachers and so require a different set of solutions to meet student needs. Anyone proposing farming out LVS students to teach, teachers across the district, offering teachers to give up a plan to teach a class does not understand the amount of work that online educators put into securing student successful outcomes. The investment is in connecting with students and communication between all parties involved. How will teachers maintain community if they have less planned time for both brick and mortar and virtual instruction? How will staff support student success if they are scattered across the district? And how will staff provide academic accountability for the whole student? I feel compelled to speak with my former colleagues, knowing that during the years I worked at LVS, I recognized that being virtual, LVS was often overlooked or misunderstood by the USD 497 community. But our students understood and valued the teachers and the effort that they benefited from. So many families found a solution for their students in LVS because of the teachers and the sense of community provided. This is what matters and this is what will be lost if care is not taken to preserve it. I was part of the building of this wonderful community called Lawrence Virtual School. It takes a long time to build something wonderful and such a short time to dismantle it. I hope you will ask the teachers and families for their input before making decision regarding the future of this school. I have included my contact information, and thank you very much for your time.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Puxley, and I've been proudly serving as a teacher in the LVS community for over a decade. It was hard to summarize what LVS has been in my tenure, as we know, LVS has had a very long history, almost two decades, of serving not only local Lawrence students, but students all over across the state of Kansas. Here are a few points I would like to bring to the board's attention. LVS is a very unique community. Students choose to come here. There are many reasons why they choose LVS, but we know this place has been serving the needs of students who need a place to thrive and grow. They need a safe place. They need a place where they can be themselves. They needed a place that they can call home. This is what LVS provides for families, a home. They have, there have been so many changes in the past few years at LVS, and it's been taking a toll on our community. We've lost amazing teachers and lifelong families because they have simply not been heard. Decisions continue to be made without asking stakeholders why they choose LVS and why this is their home. Decisions that sound good on paper but actually don't work for virtual education. I will tell you, in the beginning of my career at LVS, I was against our homeroom model. I thought, what on earth are we doing here? What's happening? And now I've become a biggest supporter of it because students need more from us. They need their homeroom teacher who is the champion in their corner cheering them on and the one who is politely giving them the virtual kick in the pants if they need additional support to be successful. We would not be the school we are today without the homeroom model, and decisions from the top continue to be made without asking our families, students and staff. We are the experts who are currently serving the needs of our community every single day. And this just isn't a place of employment. This is a way of life. I'm a better teacher because of the LVS community. A decision was actually made last year that, at our threshold, is 63 students per class, which includes our advisory class and our homeroom. This is an inequity because it causes that some teachers could be overloaded with 300-plus students while other teachers in our own community have way less, like 150. The decision was made without consulting our school community. It would be very difficult to support a homeroom of 63 students and provide the same type of services we do for our students. In my tenure at LVS, my largest homeroom was 55, and many nights and weekends were spent just to help meet their unique needs. You would never put that many students in a brick and mortar, and you raised the number and voted as a board to have 63. In this place, we are literally saving lives of students who need something different than the brick and mortar. I would hope that you would please listen to our families and our staff before making decisions so we can have the tools we need to continue to help students succeed. Please help us rebuild our LVS community and to regain students we've lost and hopefully new students to join us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Marcia Riggins. I am an LVS educator, and I know just enough about social media, especially Twitter, to be dangerous. And so I have spent recently lots of time on it because I found out sports teams and the school in general communicates that way, so I've had to step out of my comfort zone, even being a virtual teacher. Dr. Brad Johnson, who I have read books, Dear Teacher, and have found as an amazing, hopefully someday come to Lawrence PD provider, says that we have relationships before rigor, grace before grades, patience before programs, and love before lessons. And I would ask this district to consider, when you're looking at Ms. Cooper's resignation and posting a position, to please consider responding before reacting, discourse before decisions, communication before changes, and purpose and vision before programs and PD. Dr. Martin Luther King said, "Never, never be afraid to do what's right, especially if the well-being of a person or animal is at stake." Society's punishments are small compared to the wounds we inflict on our soul when we look the other way. Tonight, you've heard some, from some educators from LVS, past and present, who understand what's at stake if we rush the decision as to what and who the future of LVS is going to be. LVS has had four principals in its time that it's been open. Gary Lewis was there for six years, Keith Wilson for eight, Monty Westfall for three, and Susan Cooper for two. During this administration, LVS has had two principals in five years. I would ask you to question why. And I will share with you that, looking back at dates while I was putting this together, that Principal Cooper's approval went to you on July 12th in 2021. It's now July 10th, and you, we haven't even opened it up. So please pause and think of creatively and give us the time to find the right person and maybe as a board and as a district, figure out what is the future of LVS? What does it look like and what do you expect? We talk a lot about equality, diversity and equity. And I also found that on Twitter, it says, Dr. Johnson says, equality is everyone gets the same book. Diversity is everyone gets different types of books. Equity is everyone gets the books that is right for them. But then it goes deeper, and this is where I see that where LVS makes a difference, across the state of Kansas, is that acceptance is understanding that everyone reads different types of books. And I would say everyone needs different types of learning opportunities, and LVS is definitely one of them. Belonging is reading any book you want without fear of being judged, and that is LVS also. And then justice is fighting to make sure everyone has access to books, and I would hope that you would have justice in fighting to make sure everyone has access to a rigorous and inclusive education at Lawrence Virtual School.
Thank you. This time we'll have board commentary.
Thank you, Kelly. I want to start off by also expressing my personal condolences to the family of Hank Booth. Hank was such a pillar of the Lawrence community that it's really hard to imagine Lawrence without him. And Dr. Lewis and Kelly both expressed most of the things I would want to share about that, except I would also like to add that he always had a kind word or a fond memory to share with every person I think he ever met, but certainly in all the times that I interacted with Hank in my role as a board member, talking about Lawrence Public Schools, he always shared his fond memories of Lawrence Public Schools and how much he, he cared with me. And I was really appreciative of that because he was just such a cheerleader and supporter of just goodness in our community. So he will be deeply missed. I wanted to share with the board a couple of professional development, totally switching gears now, a couple of professional development opportunities that I recently attended. Campus Safety Magazine did a webinar on what school boards need to know about school safety. It was, it was interesting. It was a panel discussion. I knew a couple of the presenters from some other work that I've done. It's available online if board members are interested in an update. It was really, it was, it was unique because I haven't been to one of those that was geared at school boards. It's usually geared toward administrative staff, so that was helpful. And then KASB, on the June 28th, did their first of a couple of webinars that they're doing on an updated superintendent evaluation tool and procedures for boards to consider in Kansas. One of the roles of past president of our board that's set out in our board manual is to assist the board president in talking about professional development and practices. And so I would like to spend a little time, now that I'm past president, in looking at this new tool and procedures and perhaps arranging some conversation with the board to talk about those, those professional development opportunities. And then finally, I wanted to express my thanks to the Noon Rotary Club for selecting me as their Non-Rotarian of the Year for 2023. I attended their meeting today to receive that honor, and I just, I just have to say I was absolutely humbled to be chosen. So thank you to the members of that group for recognizing my service in that way. I'm deeply appreciative. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Just a couple of things. One, just to thank Shannon and Paula and Erica for your service over the last year. It's been, it's been a joy to, to, to serve with you all over the, this last year, but, but specifically with, with Shannon over, over the years. Shannon and I have known, known each other and served off and on for longer than I would like to admit because it means we're getting older. But since 2010, I think, so we're really old. But congratulations to Kelly. Welcome, Bob, and congratulations as, as, as well. Just, just a couple of updates. We've, due to some scheduling conflicts and some other things, we did not have a facilities committee this last week. We're going to have one next, the 19th. So hopefully here shortly, we'll be able to get some updates on, I think, solar and, and some other projects. I did find out for the fiber network, we have one connection left to go, which is on our end. And then once that connection is finalized, we'll start migrating actual physical devices from the old network onto the new network. And then we'll start with the second phase of that, of that work, which is really the, the big piece and the equity piece of that work. So after the facilities meeting, we'll have some more specific updates on that. So those, those are some, some two big updates that are coming, that and some updates on solar. And then, and then lastly, because I promised her that I would, it is my daughter Anna's 15th birthday today, so I'm officially telling her happy birthday.
And thank you for the cupcakes, Anna. They were delightful.
This is Carol. I just want to congratulate Kelly on being the board president. I look to you for leadership and sound advice, and I've come to consider you a dear friend. So congratulations. But Bob, thank you so much again for stepping up. This is a huge commitment. As you know, I mean, you're, you're a veteran, so I may be looking to you for advice. But I would like to extend, again, my condolences to Hank Booth and his family. As of, I grew up listening to Hank Booth and his radio shows, and I have many fond memories of listening to his show in the car during family rides. But I've, I got to know him as a friend, and he will be missed. He was just, just a good person, just golden. He will be missed. And let's see, this is just a thought, but I would like to ask this board to consider making a resolution or for, or create actions to request money from the, the Kansas budget. Last week, the Kansas revenue surplus was announced that there's a surplus of 1.6, 1.5 billion dollars in the rainy day fund. And I think it'd be, it would, it would be beneficial to this community if we look into how we can, you know, get some of that rainy day money to benefit Lawrence Public Schools. And let's see, I'd just like to tell Anna to thank you for the, the birthday cupcake and happy birthday and many more to, to come. Thank you.
I think I'm the only one that may not know you very well, so I look forward to your leadership. And I know Kelly, so, so I look forward to your leadership as well, Kelly. And I do hope that you make space for some introverted leadership for those that are often quiet, so I really appreciate it. Thank you.
So we're going to recess to executive session. Does anyone want to make the motion?
I move to recess to executive session for the purposes of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed with Dr. Anthony Lewis invited to be present. Do we need to invite anybody else? And with the board to return to open session in this room at 7:30 with possible action to follow.
This is Erica, second. Jones?
Yes.
Fires?
Yes.
Kimble?
Yes.
Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Van?
Yes.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Julie Donley and I am a I forget who I am, a chief steward for PAL CWA. I would like to give a statement for, from our E-Board team of our historic raise and our contract. We are so proud of our historic achievements, not just in this year's contract, but in each iteration of our contract over the last three years. Eight years ago, a group of classified staff formed formed our union with the dream of living wages and respect and dignity for all classified staff who helped run our schools. In the time since, we have achieved so many historic milestones. When we won a recognition of our union of our classified staff in May 2021, we were the largest group of public sector workers to organize in Kansas in 20 years. In our first contract, we established just cause and a progressive discipline system, as well as a health and safety clause protecting all our classified staff members. In our second contract, we won approximately 4.5% raise for all classified staff and paid for the second and third snow day of each year. And in this year's contract, we won the elimination of blackout days for personal leave, a two-week warning before an employee is involuntarily transferred union representation for employees who experienced discrimination or harassment, and the largest raise for all classified staff in at least 18 years. Our hundreds of amazing, dedicated, hard-working union members made this happen. We rallied, we signed petitions, we wore buttons, we wore red T-shirts. We wore, we wore signs with our low wages to work. We held informational pickets, we marched, we packed the bargaining room, and most importantly, we organized ourselves into the powerful force that is our union today. We are so grateful to the community members who supported us by sharing our posts on social media, wearing red in solidarity, and writing hundreds of emails to the school board. We are so proud of our, our work thus far, and we know that our fight continues. We must continue organizing to protect our health insurance benefits and to get all employees to a living wage next year. We will be back at the bargaining table next year fighting for a $3-an-hour raise for all classified staff so that every staff member makes at least $16 an hour, which is a living wage for adult, for an adult in Lawrence, Kansas. We will also be fighting for the schools our students and staff deserve in Kansas by organizing to fix the state school funding formula and get every student, family, and school worker the resources they need to thrive. We invite our whole community to join us in this fight. Our stakes are high and the risks are great, but our union was only once a dream and together we made it a reality. As we say in our national union, Communication Workers of America, when we fight, we win. Thank you.
Are you doing LEA right now?
I was going to offer a quick matrix update on classified.
Is it classified? Okay, yeah.
Megan Epperson, Assistant Director of HR. It is Matrix Summer, so we have two bargaining unit matrix updates, and I wanted to quick, share a quick update for what's happening on the classified side of the matrix updates. As Kevin mentioned earlier, we're moving to closer to 68% of FTE valued at $15 an hour, or making $15 an hour or more. That's an increase of about 17% over the last year's FTE, and a lot of that is coming from some moves we particularly made with the matrix. We looked at levels, the first three levels in our matrix, and decided not to place any one in those levels anymore, which helped us move that starting wage up considerably, and then adding that additional 212 on the base moved that starting wage up even higher. So something we've been working on in Human Resources is the reclassification of some of our positions of our lowest wage earners. So that's really impacting a lot of our paraeducator positions, our non-instructural monitor pay, health office assistants, a couple of other positions like that, are seeing some of those additional wage increases. That's why we're presenting that range of 212 to around $3 or so, depending on where that staff member was placed. In addition to that, we're making some modification, excuse me, modifications on the right-hand side of the matrix, which looks at the years of experience for better, without a better term to describe those years of experience there. We're adjusting those columns to keep them steady for three years. So staff who might be in column S, for example, would see the same rate over ST and U and then have a higher jump when they move to V. So there's some specific intricate details getting into those matrix pieces, but we'd be more than happy to answer any questions about that rollout if you all have any questions. And I think that was the main part of the matrix adjustments that we were making for classified.
Questions from the board?
I don't have a question. I just want to publicly state how excited I am, how, how awesome it is for the work of PAL CWA. I have spent some time in my first stint on negotiations, so working with PALWA in the beginning and to, to see where you are now and what you've been able to accomplish and to compliment you on that, to compliment the district staff and all the work that you did, the, the work that you were able to combine this year, and to Kelly and to Paula for your work as well. This is, this is phenomenal work. I think a lot of people tend to think that negotiations is just getting in a room and having a conversation and it's all just magically works itself out, and it, it doesn't. It takes real work, it takes foundational work, it takes, it takes a lot of trust, it, it takes effort. And everyone at that, at that table had to, had to go through that process, and this, this is amazing. And as Kevin said in his opening remarks, this is not, this work isn't finished. We're, we're still, we're still committed to continue to move forward, but we can, we can take a moment tonight and acknowledge that this is, this is, this is amazing, and, and you all deserve, deserve the credit to get us here, so.
I share GR's comments. Megan and Dr., or Kevin, your leadership, including Tatiana's leadership as well, working collaboratively on PAL CWA and the negotiation. It, it wasn't just a fight, it was work that we did together. I don't think that there was a moment that I didn't believe we wouldn't come to some agreement. Kelly might disagree. But I, I appreciate even talking to some of the PAL CWA. Megan, thank you for making the language understandable, because I know the matrix can be really complicated and building that out. So I appreciate the work that the district and PAL CWA did together.
I just want to say thank you to both teams, to PAL CWA's team and to our staff and board members. I know it is an incredible commitment of time on all of your parts to do this work for the benefit of our employees and our, and our, ultimately, this benefits our students. And so I'm, I'm really grateful that we are at the place we are at. It, this would not be possible without a lot of really difficult work and decision-making on behalf of the district and the union together. And so I just, I want to highlight for our community that being able to do this tonight, to, to give approval to this agreement, we're able to do this in part because we have worked very hard to take a critical eye and look at what we are doing and figure out how to make change to benefit our staff and ultimately, our students. And I absolutely am committed to continuing to do that work going forward. I think that, that we, we have a lot to be proud of in Lawrence, having a classified staff union. It's rather unique, and I am proud to have been one of the board members to vote to support formation of the union when, when we approved it. I'm, I'm, having your voices at the table to help inform our decisions has been immensely important. And so I just wanted to, to share that with you. Thank you.
Yep, I just want to echo something that Paula said and to, to PAL CWA and to our district team. Thank you, but also echo Paula's sentiments around, you don't have to fight, you know? You, you fight those that want to fight you back, and we don't, and I don't think this board wants to fight. I think you continue to advocate on behalf of your workers, and we will continue to work collaboratively, because as Kevin indicated, we're not there yet, but I think this is a huge step in the, in the right direction. And I would be remiss if I did not just honor Denise Fish in this space tonight. She was a tremendous advocate for, for our classified staff and was instrumental in starting PAL. So in her memory, I just want to acknowledge her in this space.
This is Carol. I just want to thank you for all that you do for our community, and I, I do promise you that we will do our best to improve your conditions, because I, I recognize this, this wasn't, this wasn't easy. I thank Paula, Paula Shannon and Kelly for their hard work. It is, it does, it takes a physical, mental toll on the body and on all parties involved, so I, I thank you, and I recognize that, I recognize your dedication, and I just want to thank you. And we will do our best to pursue the Rainy Day Fund that is just sitting there in Topeka. It's $1.6 billion, and I think that we can put our heads together in this room. We, we have jobs that overlap with each other. We have Mr. Finkel Dyer over there, he's on our city commission, and we have Patrick Kelly, he's the county commissioner. I know that we can, I know that we can work together to somehow, you know, improve our conditions of Lawrence, because I love Lawrence, I'm just, I'm, I'm just, I'm just proud of Lawrence. I'm like Hank Booth, I just grew, I, I don't know, I'm not going anywhere. Thank you.
I'm really excited about this next step. I get to ask for a motion. Thank you for the way that you showed up and the way that you're consistent in your message and how you represent your colleagues. I know you do it after hours, I know that you're already taxed. Thank you for showing up and reminding us how important it is to have strong unions in our district. And Megan Epperson, I don't know that we could have changed either matrix without your brain. I don't think it would have been possible. So thank you for everything that you've done, and Kevin, the way that you kept board members in line and reminded us how to work and, and created a collaborative process in doing the, and making sure that we were following the boundaries and, and really being a good representative of our district. I appreciate everything you all did. Paula, would you like to make a motion?
Yes. I move the Board of Education. Am I reading the first one or the motion at the bottom?
It's the.
Committed action?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
The staff recommends the Board of Education ratify the tentative agreement with the Personnel Association of Lawrence Communication Workers of America, PAL CWA for the 2023-2024 school year and fund an increase to classified compensation pool in the amount of $2,580,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Kimball?
Yes.
Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Van?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Okay, we're moving on to the ratification of tentative certified agreement and approval of administration. To assist us tonight, PAL CWA has, or not PAL CWA, LEA has shown up, and Kristin Ryan and Megan Epperson.
All right, good evening. Kristin Ryan, Executive Director of HR.
Sarah Sillian, I am the lead negotiator for LEA.
Good evening to all board members. Tonight, we would like to share with you the agreed-upon salary increases for both certified staff and district administrators. I first want to thank the USD 497 negotiations team, the work to address competitive staff salaries started the past two years with negotiations and the salary subcommittee. This year, countless hours were spent in the IBB process, having dialogue as a team under some very tough circumstances as a district to address competitive staff salaries. Due to extremely difficult decisions and prioritizing staff salaries, a tremendous thanks is due to our Board of Education for supporting an increase to our certified salary pool of $3,745,000. This increase has allowed a certified matrix update, which includes additional vertical steps in columns bachelor's plus 20 through PhD level, two vertical catch-up steps from salary freezes from the 21-22 school year and the 22-23 school year, and one-year vertical movement for this year. Horizontal movement for those staff that are continuing learning and doing application and impact points and/or graduate credit to improve their career, and $1,800 for a special education teacher stipend. So we're pretty excited about all of that.
So this is years of work. Matter of fact, I was thinking earlier, I was looking back to when Mr. Byers was on the board before, and he may have actually been here when we compacted the schedule in the first place. So I thought, finally, we have something like, we don't have to go, well, I think. He'll say, I know. That's great. And so I think when people were thinking of, well, why is this so significant? I mean, yeah, like, we've been asking for raises, and I just kind of looked back a little bit. And so the last vertical movement we had was in the 2021 school year. That year, we added $300 to the base, and we also had a horizontal movement. We've been able to keep horizontal movement each year, and I'll get to why that's also important here in just a second. In the 21-22 school year, we had our horizontal movement, but we didn't have any increased to base, and we didn't have any horizontal movement, or any, any vertical movement, sorry. And that year, our approval rate for a ratification process reached a new low. And we thought, eh, I mean, it made sense, but it didn't feel good, right? And then last year, in the, we were able to, I got my years wrong, sorry. And so we added $825 to the base last year, we kept our horizontal movement, but we still didn't have vertical movement, and then that year, our approval rate got even lower, and that got really scary. So we've always made horizontal movement, funding that a priority, because staff has already put out their own money to get those credits in college and to get those certifications and to do all of those things. And so on the years that we weren't able to have vertical movement, that was about the only way you could guarantee you might be able to get a little extra money. So people really focused on going back and finishing those credit hours or those sorts of things to make sure that they could make a movement. And so we also, we'll still need to kind of continue working on how we look at those. So we have people who have CTE hours, so like our automotive techs, they have ASE certification. How can we reward that knowledge and that expertise? Because that's hours and hours of training for them too. What about our nurses that have, you know, they have their own way of renewing their licensing? And that's not something that you can go to PD here on, on PD days and get credit for. They're having to go above and beyond on their own. So we have, we still have things to do to work on that, because the board did say that one of the priorities that they would like to see is that we are growing as learners, because we are lifelong learners, and rewarding that ability to keep adding to our, our level of knowledge. And so that is definitely something we're working on. So we haven't solved every solution. There were a few people who, because we had to cut off that corner, weren't able to get raises, and we have not forgotten them, and it really hurts. And it's really hard to come to grips with, because you, you know, you don't want to leave anybody behind. They've also been, they've been here for years, and they've put in their time and their effort, and they, they are valuable too. So we are going to keep, keep working on that. I would like to say that I do appreciate the IBB process. It's been really great for drilling down to those issues that we've had for so long and really trying to come up with some workable solutions. And I feel like we're, it's really starting to kind of pay off now. And I think that's kind of the summary, but, so we had the doom and gloom of we had our lowest approval rate last year for our ratification process, and this year, I would guess, it's probably the highest ever, 96% voted yes. So that's amazing, and a sign that we are doing something right, so.
Thank you, Sarah. The only other point, and then I can explain the graphic. For the administrative salary pool, it will see an increase of $325,000. And for this group administrators or district administrators, building principals, assistant principals, this increase also supports our administrative salaries to be competitive in neighboring districts and across the state of Kansas. The graphic that's up here, it just shows percentage-wise where the amount of money went to all three pools. So you can see that the, out of the 6.65 million increase in salaries, 56% of those funds went to certified, 39% of those funds went to the classified raise, and 5% went to the administration. The percentage is on the right, that is the increase to the pool. So it was a 16.7 increase to the classified salary pool at the cost of the 2.5 million. An 8.1 increase to the certified salary pool and a 5.5 increase to the administrator pool. Anything else?
No, I didn't have any questions.
Yeah, any questions? And big thanks to Sarah. We're constantly collaborating and, and communicating, and that's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you as well, and also Megan, who now has to deal with all of the matrix.
Yes.
Thank you.
Megan, do you have anything to?
So part two of our matrix updates in Human Resources, and I would be remiss if I didn't also thank our team in Data Services. Ellen Jones in particular has been working really hard at the, behind-the-scenes upload of a lot of these matrices and the movement of staff into those systems. So I really want to thank HR and our Data Services team. In terms of matrix updates for certified, it's a little more complicated. So staff who might be listening this evening, they received an email, I think, last week or the week before outlining our review process, the way our system tracks years of experience for certified staff members. If staff came in with more than 12 years of experience and were placed at that level, at that step 13, therefore that old max, we don't necessarily have a way of tracking how many years of experience they've accumulated or they brought in. So we are going to be working really one-on-one with certified staff members this fall. We're going to allow staff to reach back out throughout this fall semester to discuss their placement, so that we make sure we're placing them accurately in regard to their years of professional experience. So we'll be sending out mailers to staff here in late July, early August to confirm at least our initial placement based on our system. We're very confident that the bulk of our staff will be placed accurately based on their professional experience. It's that group of folks who came in with that additional years of experience that gets a little more tricky with the way our system tracks them. So we'll be communicating directly with them and providing a lot of time this fall for them to reach out to us, to provide employment verification, to start that dialogue, so we can work one-on-one to make sure we're getting folks to those, those correct spots. So that work has started, and HR, we're really excited and have heard some great feedback already from some of our new staff that came to New Hire Orientation in June. They received copies of that draft schedule, and we're very pleasantly surprised that their number probably changed. So we've gotten a lot of great feedback so far. I started to do some salary matrix analysis of our district versus the other districts with this new matrix, and we're really excited about the new trends that are starting to show up.
One more point. I think Jeannie Williams is our onboarding certified staff. So she handles every person that enters. She was so excited because of the difference. She, she's the one that gives the salary to the upcoming candidate, and her words were, how many more will say yes? Because we're, we're getting more in line with the surrounding areas, so thank you.
Yes. Kristin, just for context, could you share with the board and with the public approximately, I know it changes probably week to week, but approximately how many employees are in each of those three categories?
Yes, so for, and Megan, you can check me. For certified staff, based on our exits, I think we're about 845.
875.
All right, 875. Yeah, like 562 classified. 59?
I was going to say 54, there you go.
Yeah.
54.
54 to 59 administrators.
And that includes all principals and vice principals?
District office, principals, associates, assistant principals, yes, and all district office administrators.
Okay.
I can get exact. If you want exact on the administrator.
If you have it handy. If not, that's something I can follow up on later, thank you.
Was that all you had, Shannon?
It's the only question I had.
Okay.
That's some general comment. I'm worried of questions.
Okay, I was just going to go to comment, so you could give your comment. Go ahead.
Okay. So I just want to say thank you to the LEA for sticking with us in this interest-based bargaining process. In my years of service on the board, I have seen a distinct difference in our ability to meet your needs, because we are engaging in that process. And I know, I know that is even more labor and time-intensive for all of the people on the team, for, for you and for the board and the district. So my, my many thanks to you for that. I, it's, I think it really is the reason why we are, we have been able to make some of the moves that we are making to support our teaching staff. So I appreciate that, and I hope that we can continue to have, to, to have that and grow that relationship, because then ultimately, I think that is what is going to get us to the goal that we have of making sure that we are competitive as a district, supporting our teaching staff in, in being here in Lawrence Public Schools. Voting to support this tentative agreement tonight, this will be the largest salary increase I have ever been able to support for staff in the last dozen years, and I can't even tell you how excited I am to say yes to the, to this, just as excited as I was to say yes to the classified staff contract. Before we started doing interest-based bargaining and kind of taught and had two staff unions, it had always been the practice of the district to bargain with the LEA, and then the classified staff got the same percentage of money on their pool as class, as certified staff. And so allowing us to look at this in a way that we can do more benefit for both employee groups, I think has, has been greatly beneficial, so. And I'll say the same thing about this as I did about the classified agreement. All of the difficult decisions that we have been asked to make over the last couple of years are making it possible for us to do this work for our teachers, and I firmly believe that retaining our teaching staff and keeping you engaged in our district is one of, is one of the best things that we can do for our students. So I'm very excited about the work that has been done on this contract, and I just wanted to say thank you.
So I'll echo a lot of what Shannon said and what I said with PAL CWA, but I'll, I'll also thank the LEA, having served on negotiations when it first started, IBB, and then here, here, here lately, having been a bystander in the room and knowing a lot of the voices at the table. It's been, it's been fun to watch that relationship and that hard work and that foundation. You guys are, you guys are awesome. You work, you work really hard. As, as Kelly said, you know, we couldn't do this matrix work without Megan. We couldn't do the LEA matrix work without Ellis. So I'll, I'll give a, I'll give a specific shout-out to Matt, to Matt right now. You know, as, as Shannon said, we've, we've, we've had to make a lot of rough and difficult choices the last couple of years. And this particular year at the negotiating table has not always been easy. It hasn't, it hasn't always been pleasant, but both sides knew what the goal was, and you knew what you were trying to get to, and you trusted each, each other to realize what the the end result was, even through the difficulties and the rough decisions and maybe the detours around the process that were kind of hard to navigate. But you did the work, and we did it together. And again, it's not the end. It's just a step. But like with Powell, CWA, I think taking a moment to acknowledge the hard work and acknowledge what we're able to accomplish, I think, is important. And like Shannon, I'm really proud to be able to support this motion tonight and what it's able to do for our staff.
Yeah. I wanted to, as being new, kinda, I really wanted to take more, I tend to be more of a systems perspective guy. And as I said here, having spent years in the district and can remember sitting in the room over there, looking at budget and trying to come up with, how can we scrape anything? And as I looked from a systemic standpoint, I have to give the board credit because the board made some hard decisions. To get to where we are today, the board had to make those decisions. And I think we celebrate once the approval happens, but we also have to celebrate and thank the board, the community, the administration for the work done to get here, because I'll tell you, it wasn't easy. So again, it's, I've said, and when we did not give raises at all, because we'd had nothing to give, this feels good, because it's really the first time I've sat on the board where we actually can say we're doing something to get to where we actually want to be. So, thanks for the work.
I'll just make it quick. Sarah, I appreciate your leadership and your patience, especially with me when I didn't quite understand all of the dynamics of the group. And I agree with all the great things that were said, but I would also like to challenge certified staff to bring, I'm chasing my words here, be more inclusive at the table so that, and you all did great work, and I just appreciate your patience, but I think I would like to challenge you all just to bring some new voices to the table and be in inclusive space.
All right. So this is the part where, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Carol.
This is Carol. I would like to think, just to be respectful for everybody's time, but I would be remiss if I didn't stop and recognize that this came at a heavy price, the school closures. And many of our community members are still grieving the loss of our schools. So this is, it's a time for celebration, but at the same time, I think we, well, I'm going to recognize that, you know, it impacted a lot of families, especially on the east side. So, thank you.
Just no comments? Okay. Appreciate my board colleagues' comments and recognizing all the challenging decisions that went into this and all the ways that we're impacted to get here. I also want to recognize Kristin Ryan and Megan Epperson had been in this role for a year and a half to get us here, and you just, Megan, just a few months. And Sarah, you stepped into leadership also just a few months, well, when we were getting to the part where it was getting real complicated. You all of a sudden had to take up leadership. So that's an interesting dynamic when you think about the resolution that we came to. And, you know, back to Paula's comments, it does remind you that experience matters, but also bringing new people to the table can also hand in new and interesting and important results. So I look forward to working with you all again next year and seeing what we can do to help our certified staff feel even more appreciated for the work that they do. And Dr. Lewis, thanks for helping us to get here. I appreciate you. All right. Is there a motion?
I'll do it. I move the Board of Education to ratify the tentative certified agreement and the Lawrence Education Association and approve the compensation package prorated by FTE for certified staff for the amount of $3,745,000 and $325,000 for administrative staff.
I'll second.
Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Van?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
That, that's awesome. It really feels good knowing that, again, like I mentioned earlier, this is something that hurt five years ago, and it was the number-one objective, the number-one priority of our futures planning committee, to improve staff salary, and we are here tonight. And it was mentioned earlier that this, and I do believe this is definitely a historic day for our classified, our certified, and our administrators, this indispensable group of dedicated educators who support our scholars and our families in a major way, at a time in this country where educators are not valued as they should. And so this is definitely an investment that helps give dignity to the profession, in my opinion. It's a step in the right direction that this helps give educators the respect that they so rightfully deserve, and I couldn't be more proud. Again, we can celebrate, but we roll up our sleeves again tomorrow to continue to work on behalf of our educators. And it was mentioned also earlier that the reason I think this is a historic day, because the likes of this have not been done in probably close to two decades. And so to kind of put it in perspective, last year the salary pool was around $1.7 million, and this year to be able to bring $6.5 million is really huge, I really believe. And so, thank you, Board, for your work. This approval tonight, again, helps elevate the dignity and humanity of all educators and respects the needs of our students, because these educators work with our students. And so this decision is respecting the needs of our students. But not only that, it is helping us as a school system to be a fiscally fileable school district for years to come. So I'm super excited, and thank you all, the entire community, as I mentioned, that participated in the future planning process, those members of the futures planning committee to get us to this point tonight.
Thank you. So I'll just say it really quickly. When I took, when I was last board president, it was also a historic night. So I sat down, and it was the beginning of, Eric and I sat in leadership, and we had to make decisions, really hard decisions, around what to do around COVID. And it was a rough year. I did not enjoy it. It was not my favorite moment. I learned a ton. This feels so much better. So as we move into the next year, I hope that we can, this can set the tone, that we can begin to not have conversations about closing schools, that we're not having conversations about what isn't in the best interest of our district and doesn't support our teachers and our staff, and really looking at what we can do for our students, which I know every administrator, every teacher, every classified staff that I sit across from, I can tell how much you love the kids that you serve, and this is a really good way to start the year, to honor that work that you all do. I'm so grateful that we can be doing this. So let's move on and see what else we can do. Okay. So we pulled from consent, we have on new business, the LVS resource purchase FlexPoint licenses. And in this, Patrick Kelly, we may need your assistance on this particular item, and Shannon, some clarifications.
Yes. So I pulled this item actually because we have, in my role as former president of the board, I understand that we have some public comment that we are going to need to hear in executive session. I personally do not have any questions about the agenda item at this time, but that was the reason that I asked that to be pulled, so that we could do public comment in executive session.
So if there are not questions from the board, we'll move to, are there questions from the board about the curriculum before we move? Okay. So then we would move to executive session, correct? Do you want to make that motion?
Yes.
If you refresh, there's an updated motion as well.
Okay. Give me just one moment, please. I move to retest to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, with Dr. Anthony Lewis, Marsha Riggins invited to be present, and with the board to return to open session in this room at 8:20 PM with no action to follow.
Second.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Van?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. The item in front of us is related to the LVS resource purchase FlexPoint license. Are there questions from the boards or comments about the item before we vote? Go ahead, Shannon.
I don't have a comment or a question about this specific item, but I would like to ask the board leadership and Dr. Lewis to consider, given that we have heard a lot about the virtual school in our board meetings of late, I think it might be a good use of the board's time to consider a work session or some learning opportunities for us about some deeper learning about the school. And so I just wanted to share that so that board officers and the rest of the board could consider that possibly for a future meeting.
After hearing the conversation, I think, for me, I would find it difficult to vote on this item. I actually probably would suggest that it be referred to the superintendent and have the issue looked at, to clarify, and then brought back to the board for a vote, that if there's some concerns about accuracy, I think that needs to be dealt with before we vote on it.
What is the timeline? What, in terms of the purchase of the, I'm gonna ask a follow-up, is it?
Go ahead.
I'm gonna ask a follow-up question related to what Bob said. So we, if we did not make that, if we didn't vote now for this particular item, I would be curious to know whether that would push us back, like in terms of the timeline that you need to purchase it for the start of the school year.
I don't know the answer to that. I wish I did. Sean Hansen, our director of secondary curriculum, worked on this item for us, and I've texted him and asked him that question if there is. We had, I will, oh, he got back to me. There's a two-to-three-week turnaround, he said. So we could probably have it ready for the beginning of school, but I would need to ask our staff at LVS to understand a little bit more about how they have to load classes, and I don't want to make assumptions on that. Yeah, I mean, whatever you like to do.
But interfere with operations for the students coming in in August is what I'm trying to, and for teachers?
Yeah, I really don't know.
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, whatever you like to do.
But interfere with operations for the students coming in in August is what I'm trying to, and for teachers.
Yeah, I really don't know.
I don't know.
I can find out, certainly, you know, yeah.
Questions from other Board members?
I would, I would be in favor of what Bob had to say, of asking to send it back for some clarification and bring it back at the next board meeting.
It very well may come back identical to what it's in now.
Right. For me, then, it's at least clear.
Other, okay, so the next question I would have, does anyone want to make the motion? I mean, even, so we, so just to verify if there's a Board member that would like to make the motion to see an up and down vote for it would be important, so you would still retain the right to vote no for it, but if there is someone that feels strongly about making the motion, I wanted to provide that opportunity.
So I'm trying to be thoughtful about balancing the different concerns that could be caused by the Board not acting on this in a timely fashion with the desire of Board members to have a greater understanding of certain aspects of this particular item that are not related, is my understanding, to the financial piece in terms of the number of licenses or the cost, because we do have, we do have the actual quote from FlexPoint that talks about how many licenses and how much the cost is. And the contract does mention that if they have to do a rush load, which would be like putting it off, that there would be additional charges to the district for that. So I think, I'm inclined to want to make the original motion, but I want to say to my Board members who have expressed concerns, that, to my Board colleagues who have expressed concerns, that I'm not, that's not meant to dismiss the concerns, it's just that I think that perhaps the questions that we have, we don't need to delay the actual purchase of the licenses in order to get answers to them, and I am concerned about the repercussions of doing that without understanding, without being able to fully understand what the repercussions are, so. So just to see, this is a, just to see how, where we all are on this, I would, I would make the motion.
Is there any other comments before Shannon makes the motion? Oh, go ahead.
Patrick.
Yeah, I've heard back from Shawn, and he says it will be pretty tight to have everything turned around and loaded up for the ninth if we wait until your next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
With that being said, I mean, I think I would, I would support the purchase amount, but I think I would still want some, some follow-up on.
Well, one thing that was on the table that Shannon mentioned before we got into the discussion around the motion was a work session around Lawrence Virtual School so we can increase the understanding of the Board around the operations and the needs of the students and the staff and the administrators there. Is that something that other folks have interest in?
Yeah, I think so, because I think, I think one of, one of the strong messages that we've heard, not just tonight, but over time, is really what, what's the direction of the virtual school, like, like, where do we see it going? And I think having that work session and getting some more background, I think we can, we can help facilitate that, so absolutely, I think so.
Okay, Dr. Lewis, we can work on a time that makes sense with administrators to do that, and that seems agreeable.
Yeah.
Okay, so Shannon, if you're willing to make the motion?
Make the motion. I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of the FlexPoint platform not to exceed the amount of $79,475 to be paid from the Lawrence Virtual School account.
Second.
Gil?
Yes.
Yes. Jones?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Kadu Blackwood?
No.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Motion passes six one.
Thank you. So we'll move on to new business item, do you have to go?
Well, I know we want to move on, however, I don't want to leave and not having dealt with the issue, because the issue really was that the amount may or may not have been correct, but there were some other issues that were mentioned, and those I do think need, need still to be referred on, that, because if you don't, then we've just approved and moved on.
So.
That makes sense.
Patrick, I know that you do not know what those issues were. So because of executive session, I'll ask Dr. Lewis to consult with you so that you can get that information and your folks can address the issue and make sure that we have, if there's anything that needs to come back to the Board, it can. Is that agreeable, Dr. Lewis? Okay.
This is Carol, I would like to explain my vote as well.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Sure, thank you. I just want to clarify and communicate that I voted no, because I would, I would have liked to make an informed decision. I don't want to just sit here and just approve things I'm not quite certain of.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the next item polled was 2.28, Restorative Practices and Behavior Matrix, secondary tier three. Paula, would you like to lead with your questions?
Yes, I would like the Board to consider, similar to what we just did previously, asking the admin, administrators to go back and think about alternative approaches. It did not feel like the guidelines were guidelines, so a lot of, let me pull it up, sorry, I had it up a second ago. I think the part that made me uncomfortable were the level three behaviors, I understand that, first offense, second offense, subsequent offenses, they all seem to be the same, if not repeated from the first offense to the second offense. I would like for staff maybe to spend some more time on the first offense and second offense, and it still feels very punitive to me, and I'm not sure if that is a result of maybe the policies that we haven't addressed. And I know we, we've, it's taken us some time to come back around because we've lost some changeover in leadership on Policy Committee, but the first offense, second offense, just, there needs to be some rework, in my opinion, because they say the same thing in both offenses.
I have a suggestion, but I don't want to jump to suggestions, but can, would it be, would, would one of, I don't know if this would be something you'd recommend, but so I have a question for you about, we can, we can, certainly we'll provide opportunity for Dr. Johnson to provide, but do you see it going back to Policy Committee for conversation, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Certainly, yes, I do, because they were cited at the bottom. I know it's been a while since those, and if I remember right, I haven't looked back at our policy agenda to see if they were coming to the top yet. Yes, yes, to your question.
Okay, thank you. So, Dr. Johnson, would you like to?
First of all, good evening to the Board, it's good to be here in person and not have to try to talk to you online. I appreciate the question that you've asked. Paula, our Restorative Practice and Behavior Matrix, it is, it is a work in progress. Last year, we came to you, it was part of the student handbook, and I really respect the immediate feedback that we started hearing from administrators, and then really looking at the fact that we had to get things in alignment. That was what was going to be so important, because we, we realized we had one process at the middle school, and then we had another process at the high school, so really having that alignment was very important. Also, having consistent languaging as we looked across the board at the secondary level, it's going to be very important that we really get, make sure we have the secondary level in place and right, because this school year, elementary, will be focusing on their matrix and how that looks, so we have that alignment, really K-12. I think one of the, pre-K-12, I think one of the things that's also important to remember is that restorative practice is our goal. I would love it if we didn't have to have punitive consequences, but there are times where you have to have restorative and punitive consequences and things in place. So as we take this next round, if you will, in restorative practices, we will train our, our last five elementary schools at the end of this month, then we'll be able to bring everyone on board. We have a position that is posted that we will do interviews for on Wednesday, that is the Lead Student Support and Family Facilitator. That, one of the main roles of that position is that person will co-lead that restorative work that we're doing in our district, so that we can still have a greater focus on that work. If the request is for us, and what I noted was for us to go back and look at the first and second consequence, if you will, we can do that. I know that you said you wanted to, or someone said they wanted to go back to Policy Committee, I don't know when that next Policy Committee is, and date is, because it's going to be important that we have all of this in place before the first day of school. I know administrators are listening right now, because this is one of their key areas that goes into their, their building documents that they send out and things, and families, so that will hold us up, but if the work needs to be done, we're happy to go back and do it. I'm going to also bring up Dr. DeWitt, if he will, because Dr. DeWitt is the one that led the conversations with the secondary administrators in doing this work and putting things in place to really support students and as they continue and move forward.
And I don't know how to directly respond to you, Paula, in terms of what you're looking at, but one of the things we tried to do through that process was not have it as punitive as it appeared to be in previous years. And so the language in there does, I think, reflect the need to, number one, looking at tier three, these are pretty severe instances of behavior. These are generally things that, across the board, cause a fairly substantial disruption to the learning environment. And so as we tried to go through there, we actually tried to structure it in a way that there was greater opportunity for instruction and restorative efforts by the school, both in allowing the student to recognize how they have erred, allowing the student to recognize that actions do have consequences, but also allowing the school environment to recognize that there's a process to addressing that with a student and how we ultimately bring them back into the school setting. So all of these on this matrix do deal with loss of learning time, doesn't necessarily mean that the student is out of the school, but it certainly affects the environment that that student is creating that behavior. And so that's how we worked with the secondary schools to kind of bring that together.
And there's another piece I want to add that we have not said tonight, as we enter into our first ever, pre-K through 12, social-emotional curriculum of Character Strong. One of the new features of Character Strong that just came on board at the end of this school year, the first training will take place, July, when is it, 24th, 25th and 26th, will be that tier two training. So that is, that is a process that we're going to be able to bring back. We have people going to, we have two individuals going to receive that training, they will come back, work with elementary administrators, work with secondary administrators on how we address tier two behaviors in our building. That is a piece that we haven't had that greater focus on, so we're really excited about that work. And then as we go throughout the, the school year, we will be able to bring more people on and train them as well in that tier two training. You have to go in person to do that training, they don't have a virtual option.
I'm just going to take a second, just to, I believe that you can't have restorative and punitive on the same sentence, but here, your first offense and your second offense, restorative practices, short-term suspension, one to five days to include, reintegration plan, and time as needed in the recovery room. Second offense, restorative practice, short-term suspension, so that does not sound restorative to me. That sounds like punitive, you're suspending a student. I, I appreciate the work that you all are doing, but I would not want to support this unless there has been some language changes in that first offense and second offense, whether that be you take that back to the Equity Advisory Committee to have them review and give you feedback on those offenses. Just even the term offense reminds me of someone going to jail, or someone being criminalized. It just does not sound as restorative, and it definitely does not sound like it is deeply rooted in the practices and values of indigenous people. So I would like to see some different kind of language under the restorative practices other than short-term suspension, and I do appreciate all the work that you all are doing.
Thank you, Paula, I appreciate that feedback.
Just to clarify, Paula, are you wanting us to do this for this year or look at this next year for the following year? And also remind the Board and the, that these are tier three offenses, so like, you set a fire to a school, we're going to talk about it, but there, some of these are state reportable offenses as well.
Right, yes, yes, I understand that. That is a really good question. I'm not sure what that would look like, because you have a strategic plan coming, correct, in the next year?
And then, and then the other piece I want to ask is, is, this is going into print, into the handbooks, is that correct?
This will go into our district, elementary, middle, and high school handbooks, but then each individual building puts together their own document that they just have, you know, I mean, it's a, it's a smaller, a lot smaller document, that are really building-level expectations, if you will, because the, like, say for middle school, well, middle school, that addresses all middle schools. I'm going to use Southwest, Southwest Middle School, there may be certain things that they do, not do differently or out of alignment with our district handbook, but there's certain things that they will do. That will go into their handbook, and that's, they use it for a student handbook, they use it to write down assignments, notes, things such as that.
I'm trying to think of time, in terms of time, do we have time to bring the committee back before sending this to print to address some of the things that Paula has mentioned?
Kelly, may I ask a clarifying question about the content?
Yeah.
So, so I'm trying to understand some of the concerns that Paula has raised about the boxes in the matrix, and Dr. DeWitt, maybe you can help me understand this. So, so when we have a student who has committed a tier three offense, say a theft, you might have a student who stole another student's, I don't know, stole another student's lunch, or you might have a student who stole another student's laptop, and this is a first offense. Does the language in the box indicate, like, these are the things you have to do for each of those students in this order, or is it saying, depending on the facts of the circumst, and circumstances surrounding the particular incident, you may be using restorative practices in that circumstance, or you or you may be considering a short-term suspension or you may be considering, in this case, theft that could be reportable to law enforcement? I just want to understand how, what the guidance is that the matrix is giving.
Well, you know, it's impossible to list out every single scenario that happens in a school. And that's where you get into these discussions. And so you want to be able to make sure that we have good administrators, that honestly, whether you steal a sandwich or steal a computer, they're both dishonest and they both require a conversation about the why, the need. It could have different consequences. We don't know necessarily why that happened. But that's where administrative discretion comes into play. It's very difficult, again, to, you know, I hear exactly, I hear exactly what everybody is saying. Adolescent behavior is a difficult business, especially in the, in the element of running a school and keeping everybody safe and keeping it operational. But there was a sense that a lot of our discipline, especially at tier three, was regimented. You did this, well, you're out two days. You do it a second time, well, now it's automatically three. You do it a third time, well, now it's automatically a hearing with the superintendent. I don't think that's the best approach. And so we wanted to actually create a progression here where our administrators had a lot more leeway in terms of addressing the behavior and hopefully keeping the student in school rather than being almost forced to put them out of the school because this matrix here says, sorry, I have to put you out for X number of days. So I don't know if that actually answers your question fully, but that's a very, that's a very difficult question to answer because you don't always know the circumstances. And you don't ever want to get in a position where X equals Y.
Right. I guess I'm just trying to understand.
But you have to have guidelines of what you're allowed to operate within.
Right. Because the idea is to provide parameters so that we're more consistent while at the same time allowing individualized responses where appropriate is kind of what I'm getting from what you just said. And does that mean that, say, okay, so number one, on the first page, fighting, scuffle in the lunchroom. You might only have restorative practices used between those students if it's a scuffle that involves...
You would always want to involve restorative processes some kind whenever there's an interaction between students that are negative.
If, I guess, the question is asking, is it automatically that you get the suspension for each of the things that's on here, for example?
Obviously, you have to investigate, but it creates a guideline for where you're going to begin your investigation. If you've ever been in an environment where you've dealt with a fight, it's pretty disruptive. Social media doesn't help it, and quite honestly, students aren't the most willing to go in and intervene, and it becomes extremely disruptive. And so there's a process we have to go through as administrators is obviously create the most safe environment that we possibly can, and then you have to go through the investigation and give everybody due process. There's usually a victim involved in any fight, but there's always layers and stories and everything else that goes into that. And so it doesn't always necessarily mean that, that the combatants are mutual, but you have to have some ability, you have to have some trust in your administrators. Hopefully have some trust in what we're trying to do with, with our schools to recognize that certain behaviors, we can't be doing those in school. And not every kid knows. They just don't. Even an 18-year-old kid in high school, when we assume they should know, they don't necessarily know. Sometimes they have to be taught certain things, but it doesn't mean you're, you're not responsible for your actions. And so what we're trying to create is an environment that, to me, having worked in the schools, this is more consistent secondary. I work very closely with all levels secondary. It's more consistent in terms of language and it, it's less punitive because it's not automatic for each action. It actually creates more work for our administrators to do more of the restorative work throughout the process.
And I also want to add that the, you know, on page two of this document, it says the following guidelines are used in determining responses. Responses to various disciplinary actions. We had to explicitly state that. These are guidelines and these are guidelines only. So what we're saying to administrators and what we put together is that you work within this framework. This is the framework that you're following. And then it says, and I know this is something you would ask, Paula, is that restorative practices are facilitated at every level of any behavior incident that has taken place. So whether it's a stealing a lunch, whether it's a fight, you know, there are times, like Dr. Lewis gave the example of the incident of someone starting a fire, okay? Well, there is immediate punitive consequence as well as involved with, with law enforcement, all the different pieces there, but there's still a restorative piece in there before that student returns so that we can ensure that that student is acclimated back into that environment and having to go back through and explain really expectations again.
So, Dr. Johnson and Dr. DeWitt, one of the observations I would make is that this is something likely that shouldn't have been on consent, that we have a first read and a second read potentially to, to, you know, thinking about our equity presentation from last week. This, this is a, this could have, I think this could have been a really good dialogue, a whole, so we could hear a little bit about the administrative experience, hear a little bit about the process that went through the, all the work that you did to get to this space. There could have been opportunity for some feedback that it's, that's reasonable around language and, and what could be done to make it clear to, it sounds like it's clear to the administrator but might not be clear to the parent, the student. It's not, it sounds like there's some clarity needed for the board. So I appreciate that this has to get into the handbook, but I, from a process perspective, can, for me, I would like to hear a little bit, I heard, Dr. DeWitt, that you had the conversation with the, led this work with the building administrators. Were the equity teams at the building level involved? How were the restorative practice folks involved? What did that process look like in developing these processes, given the critiques that Paula has brought up and some clarity that could be used here?
Well, obviously, part of my role is on Team IEB, so Equity's focused on everything that we do. With each of these, with each of these, and these matrices went back to the administrators several times throughout the school year. They took them to their leadership teams, they took them to their equity teams. I'm not on the district equity advisory committee, so I can't speak as to whether we brought it to that group.
This piece, it did not go to the, to the district level equity advisory team. The restorative piece, those administrators. If we look at the group that truly, really on a daily basis that uses a restorative pieces, all teachers and things are expected, the ones that have been trained are expected to utilize restorative practices. Administrators use it every single day, multiple times during the day. So those people were at that table, at the table. There were student support facilitators as well who lead the restorative work within the building also at that table.
Well, as I sit here and listen, what, what I would say is, some of it for me is language. It's, when you talk about offenses, you're usually talking about crimes. At the school, that's really not what we do usually because what we're talking about is behavior. And so, so part of it is, is, is having worked in with juvenile offenders, usually when you talk about an offense, that's usually how kids and adults both view it. You're talking about a criminal action. And if you're getting into restorative, then, then to me, the language becomes a part of the issue, that you really aren't talking about an offense. What you're talking about is behavior. The student's behavior that leads you down these different roles. So my suggestion, one, would be get rid of offense because that's really more of a criminal stance. It's really not something we usually talk about. Like, I don't talk to my son about an offense. I talk to him about his behavior. And for educational purposes. And if you're talking, trying to get staff to move into restorative processes, the first thing to me you get rid of is the discussion of an offense because it's really about behavior. What did he do or he or she do, do? What was that behavior and what would those consequences be either positive or negative? And, and important for me would be around punishment as in everything else should be equitable. So, so, and so you have to be, have to add equity into that as well.
I appreciate those, those comments because that, the conversation that you just said, those statements you just said, was the conversation that we had where it says the tier three, secondary tier three restorative practice, and it said disciplinary matrix, but we changed it from disciplinary to behavior, really, truly from that, and that was the same line of thinking right there. So I understand what Paula was saying as it relates to the word offenses. And that's, and you know, and, and really, that, you're exactly right. So that is work that we will go back and, you know, make sure that we have that corrected and bring it back.
Yeah. And we'll just have to check because a lot of these are state reportable offenses and we have to have some kind of common language when we report it to the state. We can look at ways that we can, see where we can insert our own language here in Lawrence Public Schools.
I would just like to re-center the board on the fact that the, this is the tier three matrix and we are talking about things like forcible sexual misconduct committed in our buildings, engagement in a sexual act with another party without consent. So I, I fully appreciate what you're saying about the word offense, but from my perspective, when you reach this level of behaviors that happen within a building, you've, you've moved beyond calling it student behaviors because these, I was looking through this list and these are all crimes. So I, so I'm a little concerned about the conversation that we're having because I, if we were talking about the tier, tier two matrix, I might feel less uncomfortable with, with not saying what it is, but when you start talking about behaviors that, that, I hope they don't happen, but I know that we work with students, a lot of students across the district, and these things do occasionally happen in our buildings. We have to be honest about that. So, you know, and if I were the parent of a victim of one of these things, I think I would be very interested in understanding how seriously the district is going to take the response to a criminal offense that happened to my student in our building. So, and I, and I also had the concern that Dr. Lewis just raised, which is a lot of these things are in fact governed by statutes that, that we then have to write board policy around. So I would, I think I would, I would suggest that maybe what we need to do as, as board work would be to go back and look at the underlying policies in policy committee and work with administration on whether there are updates that we need to make to the underlying board policies that they're attempting to implement through the matrix. So that's another thought about, a direction that we could take with this.
So we have timeline considerations for administrators as well? Oh, go ahead, Carol, I'm sorry.
Thank you. And to add on to what Shannon was saying, I would also like to recommend perhaps reaching out to the Sexual Trauma and Abuse Care Center when you talk about sexual misconduct or misconduct. Because from my experience as a sexual assault, domestic violence and sexual assault advocate, I do know that it's extremely difficult to have those, especially with sexual assault, to have restorative justice practices in place because it may do more harm than good for the victim survivor to face the offender. So I would absolutely encourage you to reach out to the Sexual Trauma and Abuse Care Center for guidance.
There have been situations where we have reached out and they have sat at the same table with us and advised us and...
Perhaps have them sit down and look at this policy with you. Thank you.
Thoughts from other board members? Do you have more that you want to?
I don't have any additional thoughts. However, just looking at, on page two, this is just a, could be a typo. After February 27th, 2008, being a period after that, if this is going to be the published version, just looking.
From, I think from a process perspective, I think, honestly, I suspect there's very good work that went behind this. It, the board probably needed, this is one of those items where the board could use a lot of education so we could understand the work that you've done and that you would be getting, you would have the opportunity to explain, you know, the work that you have put into this, that we would have opportunity for back and forth. I'm a little bit concerned that we perhaps need, this is the exact item that we need a bit more time with to hear your thought process and how you've come to the conclusion. I'm balancing that with the fact that you need to publish your handbooks. That's what this meeting is about, is operations for next year. So I'm wondering, thinking about some of the feedback and needing, the board needing more education, the public probably needing more education on this item, what is that for your timeline and publishing?
What's the timeline, do you know what the timeline is for printing and...
For, during the printing? I just think right now, the, especially the middle schools are the ones that really do a lot of the printing. I mean, they're just literally waiting. But I, but I think that there's a way that we can also go back and even though we don't want to put like an addendum on there or, you know, they print everything else and you slip it in there and, in some way, tape it in the back or whatever, I think there's ways that we can, we can, we can make that work. I mean, that's, I mean, we want it to be right. So I mean, that's, that's the, or as close to right as possible as we transition. I mean, this is, this is a continuation of the work and things that we started last, last year. These are, these, you know, some of these same words and things. In fact, it was the same exact meeting that we brought it last year and things. It was, when we saw it and we put it in practice, we're the ones that said, we've got to get some alignment on this. That's the most important part.
So if it's approved at the July 24th board meeting, do you think that will be time to get it printed?
Well, make it work.
And it may be a good opportunity, maybe not at this meeting because we have an attorney here that's on the clock, but maybe a good idea for the, for the board to engage in conversations around what, what, what items need to come, just like policy for a first read. For, the board can approve this for a first read and then bring it back. What are additional items that need to come to the board?
Yeah. Because I certainly don't want to disrupt the work that you're all doing. I think this particular item, we just need more information so we can understand everything that you've done and, and are ready to fully support it, given the implications for equity. Because I think that's the path that you were on, but it doesn't quite read like that. So additional time to come back to the board could be helpful. So I apologize that that would mean additional work for you all, but I do think it's a, it's a responsible thing for, I mean, for me, I think it would be responsible for the board to just give it next meeting for additional time.
So what exactly are we asking administration to go back to bring?
I, that's a good question. So I would say that for me, I would like a reflection on some of the, the observations that Paula has made around the, the language, if possible, and, and also I would like additional education for myself and the public around the statutes and the language that you, you must use or why those things are there. The process, because the equity advisory council wasn't used, just to hear a bit more about how you, you accounted for that. And I know you did, as this is part of restorative practice work. I would, personally, I would feel more comfortable if I knew a bit more about the process and how they came to the, the language and supporting it. That's for me, but it, I don't know where others are at.
Yes, I'm, I'm struggling because I'm just not... These are criminal offenses. So I'm, so like, I, and I think this is my legal brain working, so forgive me, but we're talking about stuff that has hap, that potentially happens in our buildings that are crimes. So, so I, so I, like, I, you know, I am very supportive of our restorative practices work and I believe in that, but I also believe that we have to be mindful of safety and security. And so I guess I, maybe I'm struggling as to what we are asking staff to do differently. I, I do think it's important for us to be educated about what the work is and why, but I, you know, we asked them to go another two weeks. But I, you know, we asked them to go another two weeks. What are we expecting to see that's different?
Okay. Other, other folks want to jump in?
I would agree. I think that's what I'm struggling with right now. These are very, very serious.
Mm-hmm.
If you want to call them behaviors, if you want to call them offenses, whatever it is, like, this is very serious. It's not, so I'm struggling a little bit as well.
Yeah. So I, for me, it's not so, it's not, I just want to, it's not so much the word offense. I want to hear about the policy. I want to hear about the process where we got here because it's so significant as it relates to our, the work that we're doing around making sure there's not disparities in the outcomes of, as it relates to disciplinary action. So I just want to understand the, the policy more before I vote. I don't necessarily, I'm not hung up necessarily on, on particular words. I think this is something that deserves more attention than just being on a consented agenda item that we vote on. So for me, it's a significant enough item. It's a policy item that the Policy Committee didn't see that I would like to have some discussion about.
And I think that's maybe where I have a different view about the Policy Committee's role.
Yeah.
Because this, this I see is, this is gap. It's not necessarily, it's because we're not, we're not changing board policy. They, they're writing, they're writing regulations.
That's very true.
And sometimes, and sometimes when, in that process, we do talk about gap in Policy Committee, but this would not be something that the Policy Committee would originate. So-
The Policy Committee spent about a year looking at the behavior matrix and you and I were on that committee together at the same time.
Yeah, yeah, we did. And I, and I, upon reflection about that, I'm not sure that, I think, I think where I would want to see us go would be to go back and look at those underlying policies. Yeah. Right. Yeah.
So-
So what are we wanting to do?
The question is whether or not we want additional conversation about this in a, in a subsequent meeting or whether we are comfortable with where things are at, the work that's been done, and taking a vote tonight.
I would like to see additional conversation in accounting for the lack of the Equity Advisory Committee in this brought to us.
So I think we kind of understand that there's two different positions at the board. So there, there is the, if there's, it's a board item, we can take a motion if there's someone that wanted to make a motion.
The recommended action is in the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Do you want me to do it, Paula?
Yeah, it's, it's still going. Okay. I got it. Administration recommends the approval of the restorative, sorry, wrong one. I move that the Board of Education approve the restorative practice and behavior matrix for secondary tier three for the 2023, 2024 school year.
Is there a second?
Ms. Shannon, a second.
Van?
No.
Jones?
No.
Byers?
No.
Kimball?
Yes.
Cadu Blackwood?
No.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Motion fails four, three.
Explanation of vote, Madam President?
Please.
Okay. So I want to make clear that I acknowledge and appreciate the feedback from board members on the contents of the matrix. I'm concerned about a couple of things. One, I'm concerned that the board in part is responsible for not giving real clear direction about this in terms of, you know, is it a policy item versus, versus something that staff could do what they did this evening? And so I think what I, what I would have liked to see us do is move this forward while at the same time having the follow-up conversation that we need to have about it. I, I think that that would have given, given support to the work that's been done while also offering us an opportunity to have a more in-depth conversation about the concerns and what process we would like to use going forward. So that's, I think in terms of thinking about, about process, one of the things that we maybe need to do is have a conversation about what things as a group we expect staff to, for example, take to Equity Advisory Committee before they come to us. And I, I really want to make sure that-
Sure. The equity policy clearly states that they were supposed to meaningfully be able to participate in discussions around matters related to restorative practices. It does, it does give that direction. And meaningfully participate is defined within that policy. So I'm not disputing whether or not it's gap or policy. I'm disputing whether or not there should have been additional conversation and education because the item is weighty enough for that. That's what I'm suggesting. So it's not a matter of, doesn't need to be in front of the policy. It's a matter of, it is a significant enough issue that it would have been in front of a couple of committees potentially, or it could have been, it could have had a longer conversation about it in front of the board for opportunity for, for more discussion.
Fair enough. And I just want to make sure that in our, in our assignment of work, when we, you know, when we have created those committees and we are talking about what our expectations are as a group about what they are supposed to do, I just want to make sure that we've provided clear direction to staff. That really is my, my biggest concern because I don't want staff to, to think that they've done what we've asked them to do in the circumstance. And then if there is disagreement on the board about what should, what that should be, we, we need to, we do need to work that out. So I would, I would like to have that opportunity to do that.
Yes.
And that's the reason why I voted the way I did.
Thank you, I appreciate that explanation. Other folks?
So Kelly, what policy says the equity?
Equity policy states that it has, it asks for meaningful engagement on particular committees around policies related to equity and it lists them.
And it says you must use all those committees?
It doesn't say you have to use all of them, but you have to have committed and provided opportunity for meaningful participation. And it defines that.
Okay. I will look at that policy.
Yeah.
Others, other questions?
Okay. So the, I really just think the direction from the board would just be have additional conversation around-
Just want to make sure I'm clear. Maybe that needs to come back to the policy till you can include that in the equity policy.
Sure, I can pull up the equity policy.
Something like this. I have it pulled up.
Okay.
It's, when we're looking at data and analyzing data, but if it's the will of the board for us to take something like this, we probably need to take the equity policy back to include that in the equity policy.
Let me pull up the equity policy. Do you have the letters?
It's C A, C A A.
So for me, when I interpret this, it says, it specifically talks about the data, but it actually, it calls on you to go beyond state and other standardized testing outcomes that shall include race equity explicitly and that the board is responsible for monitoring. If you look at continuous improvement, it very specifically mentions, it mentions disciplinary action as an, as a dignity-related item. So though, to me, the direction from four to five, there is a connection there. And I, I would say that that's a matter that definitely should have been in front of the Equity Committee.
Is that what the board wants us to do, to take that in front of the Equity Committee?
I am reading this. I don't know that we have the time. I'm sorry, Erica, go ahead.
I was gonna, I, I need to read this. I want to make sure we're not drawing a straight line where there's room for interpretation and not assigning interpretation where, anyhow, I just need a little bit of time to read it. Not arguing that-
No.
The Equity Advisory Council shouldn't be engaged-
Yeah, I know you're not.
I'm not arguing that.
I think it could be part of the conversation, so we all have some time to digest it. I think it could be part of the conversation at the next board meeting so that there is clarity, you know, kind of what the interpretation is of, of that policy on the behalf of the board. But I would say that, you know, that this particular issue is of significance to that committee and I would imagine they would have wanted to look at the item.
We also need to use our experts in the field.
A hundred percent.
And again, with these being tier three, you know, obviously tier one, tier through, tier one, tier two, we can do that, but a crime is a, is a crime.
I'm not suggesting that the committee would direct on what the state statute says. I'm suggesting that the committee in its advisory capacity have opportunity to advise. That's all I'm suggesting. So you would definitely lead as the experts and you could come to the board and say the committee prefers X, but the, the administration is recommending Y and explain that. That, that's still, to me, it's still a meaningful way to participate. I'm not saying they're directing it or providing or writing it, but giving opportunity to provide input seems significant.
Okay. We can have some more.
Okay.
So do we need a motion or something to, to move this or do we table it or what are we doing?
I think we've asked that the item come back to the next board meeting so that we can have additional discussion because it does have to have a vote so that it can get inside of the handbooks as quickly as, as possible.
So will this go before the Equity Advisory Council, before the next meeting?
They, they will not have time to, to do that in this case, so they'll have to wait until the top of the year because I don't believe that committee is currently meeting. It's in August, so they'll have, it'll have to go back to them at that point for additional conversation. But I, the, for the board, the item would come back for us to understand more about the process, to be able to do some vetting because that didn't happen, I would suggest. Is that agreeable to folks? BGR is taking care of you. Okay. Okay. There's no additional new business, so we'll move to, there is a recess for executive session. Is there a motion?
I move the Board of Education recess to executive session to discuss potential litigation for matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma with Dr. Anthony Lewis, Dr. Larry Engelbreit, Kevin Harrell, and Brad Finkeldi invited to be present and with the board to return open session in this room at 9:38 PM with possible action to follow.
Second.
Jones?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Cadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Van?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, zero.[1456.61]
Back from executive session. There is no action to follow. We are now toward the end of our meeting. Dr. Lewis, do you have any closing items or announcements?
No. This time.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?